Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started here in just a minute or so. This will be our budget hearing. So if you've got a card you want to fill out that you want to provide a comment, please bring it to our Sergeant at Arms or City Clerk here and turn that in, and we'll make sure that you have an opportunity during the public participation portion of the meeting. It started here in about 30 seconds. Where's the... Oh, there's the gavel.
Uh-oh, sorry.
Yep, I got it. Thank you. All right. Welcome, everyone. It is August 16th, 5 o'clock PM. We are at the City Council Budget Workshop. I call this meeting to order. This time, Councilmember Willis, would you help lead us in the pledge?
(Inaudible)
Thank you very much. Welcome, Council. Welcome, everyone. The budget meeting. Excited to be here. City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Mayor Proton Kellum.
Here.
Mayor Morrison.
Here.
Councilmember Raymond.
Here.
Councilmember Willis.
Here.
All right, everyone's here. That is good. Now, we're going to go ahead and go into the public participation portion of the meeting. I have two cards here. Again, if you missed it, if you would like to speak about the budget or anything related to it, we have, I think, a budget card back there. Please turn that into our Sergeant at Arms. We'll make sure to get you. The first one I have here is Shannon Roberts. Welcome, Dr. Roberts. How are you? Doing good, thank you.
This is consistent with what we've talked about before, and that's the significance of the strategic linkage of the budget to the 2022 Visioning Session, which, as we know, there was a huge number of residents that participated in that. And I think Doug and his encouragement of council was to try to strategically link each of the decisions that you make for the budgetary projects and funding, be linked strategically to the visioning effort. So that's just my encouragement. I hope that we can see that. At some point, hopefully, you'll have that actually, you know, roadmap across the link, you know, to what you're supporting with the visioning budget item at some point. And I'm hoping that comes up, you know, in your discussions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next card I have is Ms. Gwendolyn Hagar. Well, Gwendolyn, how are you?
I'm new to the area. Been here 10 years, but I'm back full-time now. And so I'm trying to get in step with the city councils, the action of the city when it comes to spending money and budgeting proposed tax increases. So it's more of a question, I think, that in order to increase my knowledge of all of it, are these meetings that platform for me to learn about it and question things? Or is there another workshop that you hold that speaks to, you know, our financial obligations and taxes and all of that?
Yeah, I think we could all probably help. I can just say the intent of the workshops and our Finance Director might be able to help about resources. First of all, thank you for taking an interest. But these workshops are usually... We usually do one or two a year leading up to the budget, and it's a time for us to kind of work through as a council and with staff the priorities, and staff does their best job to present it. That is also open to the public. And so, yes, I view these workshops as opportunities for you to kind of be a part of that process.
And how often do those happen? What period... Which months this year do those happen, or did they already happen?
We're on our second of two workshops, I believe, that we have. There's a budget process and a schedule. It's really dictated by state law and our ordinances and charter.
So I could start attending those and then get in the flow of things, so to speak?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. All right, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you.
The proposed budget is also on the website. That might be a good...
Yep, and there's the... That you would like to access the budget, if you go to the city website. There's a government tab. There's a little section called Document Center. If you click on that, under the Administrative and Finance section, there is one link clicked, takes you right to the budget. Our Finance Department put that up there. So encourage you to go there. It's a little bit easier access than maybe going through public records. Well, thank you. That's all the cards I have for public comment. If anyone turned in a card, please raise your hand that you didn't get a chance to speak. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the workshop. Like I said, this is our second time through it. And I'd go over to our City Manager and maybe Finance Director if there's anything that you feel like needs to be said or a general recap.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Thank you, Mayor. I know the council's very familiar with this, and council has all met with John and Jenny and have many questions and lots of answers. But for the benefit of the public, I want to just kind of give an overview where we are. We have historically been the fourth lowest millage rate in Brevard County, and this budget still proposes to keep us at the fourth lowest in Brevard County. It includes proposed millage rates of 3.5164 and for the general, and then the .0432 for the library. So combined, it's a combined millage of 3.5596. The main goals, our biggest focus this year is to take into account the effects of inflation on our employees. Employees and you and all of us are experiencing inflation to the tune of, you know, we're probably paying $4,000 to $5,000 more a year just for groceries and gasoline, the things that we've just got to have. Well, what's happening is every city is making adjustments based on that. And if we don't do that, we're going to be in danger of losing employees to other cities. So we have to stay competitive. That required us to take a hard look at how we're going to compensate our employees. So what we've done is a tiered analysis for four different tiers of wage earnings. The lowest tier gets an 8%. The next highest gets a 6%, then a 4%, and then a 2%. So the lowest earning are coming up faster than the highest earning. And then, across the board, a $2 an hour increase for everybody. It's aggressive, but we feel we need to be aggressive in this current economy and the labor market that we're facing ourselves in. We're already seeing the impact of losing some employees. And when you lose an employee, you lose all that institutional knowledge that comes with them that was gained over those years. Council's been very sensitive to that. They've expressed their interest to us about needing to keep our quality employees. And at the last council workshop, City Council, all of them said, yes, we agree. We do need to focus on keeping our employees. So that's the biggest need that's addressed in this. But there are other needs that are addressed in this budget. The operational expenses, we knew that because we're bringing this up, we've got to bring something down. So we looked at the other operational expenses, the things we do, the contract services, the pens and papers and pencils, everything we could look at to lower from our operations, we did. And John helped me with it. It was some $400,000. We found we could cut out operations with those other operational expenses.
Yeah, actually, by over $500,000, when we initially did the budget, we cut because the millage that was being dictated by was at 3.88. And even, you know, when we looked at that as staff and the effect on the citizens, that was just, you know, that was over the top. But that's how we came to a 3.5596. And the thing I'd like to say about this budget, and it'll help the public too, is this budget contains exactly what council asked us to put together in the budget. So that's the starting point. That's all I want to say. What we're looking at here and what council will talk about today is if what direction they want to go in and what they may feel they don't want in the budget from this point forward. So I just wanted to bring that up. That's all.
And I was going to say that, too. So while we cut a half a million dollars out of operations, we brought up employees' pay, but we brought a half a million dollars out of operations. And then those are the big two things. And then there's the third thing is all the other things. And all the other things encompass a lot, but mostly it encompasses council's wishes. And as Dr. Roberts brought up so aptly, we need to make sure we're strategically tracking those initiatives in this budget. So the things that City Council wanted were things like making sure, setting aside funding for A1A safety. That's in this budget. Making sure we're going to continue Veterans Park. That's in this budget. Making sure we're going to do the master planning for the Civic House. All these things are in this budget. All the things that were in the strategic plan approved by City Council are in this budget. We would all like to see those things happen. But that being said, this is one of the least capital-intensive budgets, capital-project-intensive budgets we've ever had. We've had much bigger capital-intensive budgets in the past with purchase of City Hall, the purchase of this building, and the purchase of the C5 and the Cape Center. A lot of that is just not happening right now. We're focusing mostly on employees and those things that council wanted at the strategic planning retreat. So with that, we put together a balanced budget. There's been an increase in property values, assessed values across the board in Brevard County, Cape Canaveral also. If we applied the same millage rate we had last year, there would be a lot more revenue coming in, more than we think we need. So we're lowering the millage rate to that point where we think we should be. So the millage rate's actually going down, but because the assessed property values went up, there's more revenue. So that's why we have to call it a tax increase. You'll have to direct your question to the mayor, I'm sorry. So who feels the impact of the assessed value tax increases? And that's something I hope we can talk about here. As your property increases in assessed value, you're going to pay more than you paid last year unless you adjust that millage rate. Well, we're adjusting that millage rate down. We're trying to keep most people paying about the same. But the people who bought their houses or bought a new house in the last year whose assessed value is now tracked by the property praiser, that assessed value is higher than it was the previous year, that's the bulk of the people who are going to be paying more money. Most people who are year-long residents, just look at your assessed value from last year and compare it to assessed value of this year. Your taxes should be very close to the same. It's the new property owners who are going to be paying more of this. And with that, John, was there anything else you wanted to add?
No, I think you covered it all.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Council, whoever, no particular order. If somebody wants to go first?
I'll go. I'm concerned, and I know that a lot of the residents are concerned also. Not only the employees and staff have fought inflation, and it's been a tough couple of years for everyone. And it breaks my heart to have to say that maybe we ought to cut some things. And I looked very carefully. I know that it is... It's been told that it's a big budget. Well, we did receive $5,243,938 from the ARPA funds. And those funds are being used for the most important things, the things that are necessary, our storm water, our wastewater, and our employees getting a proper living wage. Very important at this point. Every city in the state is having a problem with retention. And I know a lot of young people, they go after the almighty dollar. This is true. Loyalty is a lot different today with our workers than it was when I was working. I stayed at the same job for many years. My husband worked over 32 years with his job. It's not the same today. People are going to get more money if they can get $20,000 more for doing the same exact job. I understand that. I also understand that some of the things that are in the budget are not necessary. And I know that it might not be a popular thing for me to say, but as I said, sometimes we have to do more difficult things. The ARPA funds, we have approved a lot of the things having to do with storm water and wastewater. However, we still have some unspecified qualified community needs. And there's money there that, at one point, it says here that we may specify community needs at a future date. And at this point, it says may include small business assistance and aid to impacted industries. I don't like this. It's not that we don't want to help small businesses, but I worry about small businesses applying for different grants and special monies out of the ARPA funds. And I worry that it may pit one business against another. So I don't approve of this whatsoever. So there might be some money that we can work with. I also have to point out that we need to replace those clarifiers at the wastewater plant. I consider it a safety issue that somebody has to go down and change those fans once a week, and it does cost money. We did have a bid with Avivo for $1.25 million, but that had to be put into the contract by June 2nd. I assume that was June 2nd. That has long passed. Not happy about that. That could end up costing us $2.5 million. And I say could. I realize that, yes, we have inflation. Yes, we have a supply problem in this country. However, that could stay the same, go down. We don't know. We don't know for sure. We think it could go up. Not happy about that. Anyway, I promised that I would go through the budget with fine tooth comb. I've gone through this budget with a fine tooth comb. And this is what I think that is part of my job. I'm not a financial genius by any means. I'm just a resident. I'm just a resident, a tax-paying resident. But I have come up with a few things that I think that we need to discuss. And as I said, I gave you the three things that I'm not going to change: storm water, wastewater, and employee raises. Those are important. And those things we need to consider are top priorities for years to come. However, there are things in this budget that I do not approve of. And I'm going to start with... I think we can use ARPA funds for many things. And we just got back, all of us, from Florida League of Cities Annual Conference at the Diplomat in Miami. And we learned a lot. We learned that some cities paid for their employee raises out of the ARPA funds. I also learned that there were a lot of extras that could be used with ARPA funds. I think that we use some of our funds for the fire department overtime to pay for vaccinations. I think this was a very, very good decision. I also would like to look at possibly paying for the new fire truck, $600,000 with the ARPA funds. I think that it qualifies. I know the following year, we have to have another fire truck at the cost of $800,000. But we don't know what's going to happen in our future. Look what happened with the pandemic. I say that we concentrate and work on this budget for 2022, 2023. And that's what I think we should be concentrating on right now. So I looked at that, and I do think that that's a possibility. I also think that some of the lawyer fees have been a little extravagant in the last year. I have been a council member for five years. It'll be going into my sixth year in November. I have never once called Anthony Garganisi for anything. When I have a question, I do my own personal research or I ask a staff member, and I usually get a pretty good answer. I don't go running up that bill. Pretty soon, if this continues, Anthony just won't be owning one condo in Cape Canaveral. He'll be owning the city at the rates we're paying, $250 an hour. I think it's a bit much. So I would ask our council people to please be conservative. Be conservative. Try to find your own answer with research and try to hold off on those calls to Anthony. Or, or, save those questions for our monthly council meetings and get the answer there where we can all have the answer and share in that. A couple other things I found. Oak Lane. I love people that live on Oak Lane. They bought the property on a dirt road. That was their decision. I personally would not buy property on a dirt road. Everybody makes their own decisions in this life. Yes, there's flooding. Yes, things need to be taken care of. Okay, fine. But I don't think they need sidewalks, and I don't think they need reclaimed water. For years and years, I owned a home about an acre, and I put that hose on a sprinkler system and sprinkled my lawn. And it was tough. It was very tough in Missouri when that all turns, that clay turns to just cracks all over the backyard. So it was necessary. And I had my kids and my family take that hose and sprinkler and put it around the yard. I don't think reclaimed water necessarily is an entitlement. So I would scratch that from the budget. After all, sidewalks for Oak Lane, what about the sidewalks for the other people that have lived here 60 years? They should come first. Okay, a few other things I had looked at, and I'm not going to be popular, but that's okay. I'm not running for reelection. The other thing I was looking at, I looked at the turf for the baseball field. I'm very much in favor of our Little League. I'm very much in favor. That's expensive. And then I looked at a $6,000 portable pitching mound. All of my grandkids, my husband has played baseball well into his 50s. And I thought to myself, a portable pitching mound? I never heard of such a thing in my entire life. And I asked my husband, who is a great baseball fan, "Have you ever heard of a portable pitching mound? $6,000 for Little League?" And when we were kids, we all played on a dirt field, for crying out loud. I mean, they do not need a professional baseball field to play Little League. I think they need to just start pitching in their backyard. So I object to the turf. I think that, yes, it may save money in the long run. It's not necessary. So I definitely object to that. And a portable pitching mound? Oh, come on. What about a pile of dirt? That's what we used to use when we were kids. So anyway, as I said, I have gone through with fine tooth comb. I'm just giving you a few things that I came up with. And of course, we've already scratched the galactic part. I would never allow my children to play in a park near the corner of North Atlantic and A1A. I think that would be extremely dangerous. I think it's ridiculous. And those are the things that I have to say. I'm sure there are many other things that I can think of. As I said, I went through page by page again. I hope you don't mind. This is probably the longest that you will ever hear me speak at council meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmembers, feel free to go if you would like to. Yes, Mayor Proton.
Well, thank you for all attending the budget meeting. It's important to all of us and the employees and the city. We learned a lot down at the Florida League of Cities that we are not the only city that is going through this. It's an effect of inflation and cost of goods going up. And also, you know, we want to go back to rollback. We've done it year after year, but now it's a perfect storm of going back to rollback, inflation, cost of goods going up. So we really have to think about this budget. We need to take care of our employees, absolutely. They do a great job. Again, also considering, you know, if we have people leaving here, going to Indian River County or somewhere like that, we have a limited tax base. We're landlocked. We only have so much money. So there's only so much we can pay. You know, we're not like Indian River County with a budget of $163 billion. So it's not really fair to compare us to something like that. I think the budget process needs maybe revamping, and maybe we can do that before next year. We spent a lot of money, like Dr. Roberts said, on the revisioning. A lot of people came. It was really very informative and unique to get the information that we needed, you know, to prepare the budget, to put the things in the budget that we need. I think... I have a couple of questions, but I'm going to wait till the end. That's a couple of things about what Councilmember Raymond said. City Park is our premier park. It's beautiful. Rec Center's beautiful. We spent a lot of money. The reason that they need the grass out of there is because we took a ballpark away. So for them to be able to play other sports, softball, big league baseball, small league baseball, they need that grass removed for the way they play and the softball league and other things that are there. I talked to Faceco's Little League, and they said, yes, that would help them to have the older kids come and play on that baseball field. We only have one now. We took one away. So I think it's important to do those things for our kids in our city. And, you know, at this premier baseball park, they should play on a mound of dirt. I just, I think that's not the way it should be. They should have what they need. We don't have a concession stand there. It should have been part of the plan originally. How do you have a baseball field without a concession stand? We had a concession stand there. That got taken away. We had another baseball field. That got taken away. So we want to add amenities to our, for our citizens. So I think we need to look at things that don't cost that much, but provide a lot of things for our residents. Like I said, we talked to other cities. There's a lot of people in the same position we are. I think it's very important to take care of our residents. I think there's other things that could be cut from this budget. And I would, you know, like to come back to that after I hear the rest of the council. But I did have a couple of questions for John. And you said you cut out $500,000 in expenses from the budget. Where, you know, can you tell us where that's?
Yeah, I could restate it. It's in the memo I've given to you all. But on the first go-around, typically in a budget, you know, for this city, we've averaged between $400,000 and $500,000 a year in contingency. Of course, the contingency is your revenues minus your expenditures equals the balance of that because you're always, you always want to take in more revenue than the monies you spend. But there's always unpredictable things that happen, and you want that $400,000, $500,000 cushion because you just don't know. And of course, with inflation or whatever, that's, it's a whole different ballgame. I mean, just in the simplest terms, I went to Wendy's today for a hamburger, french fry, and a soda. It cost me $10.15. I could never recall that ever happening. So that's just even on the lowest scale, everything's going up. The contingency, though, with us not wanting to ensure that the taxes are way over the top, we took the contingency down from $420,000 to $230,000. Okay, that's a bit concerning because I can't predict what's going to happen this year. But that, we did that. On our renewal replenishment, replacement items, we usually put 240K in a year. We only have 124,000. So we pretty much took $100,000, $100,000 and some thousand dollars down. Okay, and then you see the deleted IT position. You know, we really need to beef up our IT, but we decided a position that would pay X amount of dollars with the benefits was about $71,000 to an individual. That's with the benefits. We took that out of there for another year because we needed to, we wanted to bring the cost down to the citizens. IM reductions throughout 100K, different parts of IM, different things that infrastructure maintenance... Different parts of IM, different things that infrastructure maintenance does in the city. But we reduced that by 100K. Non-departmental, we took that down 50K. That has to do with IT servers or whenever. I'm basically pushing the IT server that we are going to need into the beginning of, not this year, but into the future, the future year, the next year. So that reduced the budget by 523,000. That's okay. So it's good to restate for the audience. So that's where we got our half a million dollars from, so we could get to some reasonable millage rate, which you all approve, which you all set 3.5596.
Okay. And my other question is the ARPA money. We're supposed to have 5 million. I added up what we have on the line items and it's 3,982. Where's the other?
That's, that's basically, that's basically all that we've identified based on the projects the council told us they want it. So that's what we've consumed so far. Now, and we gave you a recommended list, but this council will be the ones who'll decide that if they want to spend $100,000 someplace else, then they'll approve that in a council meeting as those things come up. So everything doesn't have to be identified immediately, but I had to tell the state what we were going to do initially with our 5.2 million. Okay? And by the way, this council, we just got the other 2.6 million dollars in yesterday. So we got our 5.2 million and I have put it in the investment account. And as we spend it, I'll pull it out and then.
And then the other thing I wanted to say is the sidewalks on Oak Lane. The, the people that live on Oak Lane, yes, bought a non-paved road. The reason this even got brought up is because with the improvements on North Atlantic, the restaurant there, La Cantina, I don't know if y'all are familiar with it, continued to flood through hurricanes and everything. So we needed to put a drain there. So his property wouldn't flood. So we talked to the people on Oak Lane about paving and they all finally agreed to pave. They don't want sidewalks. We could do a bike path of, and we're trying very hard to get reclaimed water there, not only for them, but that whole side of North Atlantic. There's lots of properties there that could use reclaimed water. And at the wastewater facility, we're always trying to get rid of the reclaimed water so we don't have to put it in the lagoon. So, I mean, it's a capital improvement project for more than just Oak Lane to get it on that side of North Atlantic. And I think, you know, I'm just going to quit for now and let everybody talk. There's some things I would like to cut as well, but I couldn't.
Excuse me, Mayor Proton? I just want to, and we could confirm this with the Public Works Director, but on Oak Lane. Is there? On Oak Lane, the sidewalks actually included in the construction costs in the, in the general fund? Or is that in the stormwater, the stormwater CIP? Because I'm not so sure that those, those sidewalks are even included, the cost of that. Could you confirm that for me?
That was a question I actually had too.
Okay.
One of y'all. So, well, I think John's point is that when you read the capital improvement project, it says sidewalks.
Could we just remove Jeff, the sidewalk thing because it's misplaced and it probably shouldn't be on that? Okay. So what he's, what he's saying, Mayor, is that the word sidewalk shouldn't be in the verbiage because it's not part of the project cost. So, so we'll remove that in the budget that you see on September 7.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. So we'll come back to you.
Just one more.
Sure.
When Mayor Jamison was mayor, he wanted that road paved. So it's been a long time.
Wow.
Councilmember Willis.
Yeah. Along with Councilmember Raymond, I looked at a lot of the same granularity that you did. Did not go off on the pitching mound, but you know, I understand the list that you had. What I didn't know at the time was the fire vehicles could be used under ARPA. Okay. All right. Well, so I, I share a lot of that same list that Councilmember Raymond had. But we also have, I mean, little things like, once we signed the contract for the electric vehicle charging stations, that comes off. I think it's, it's only $10,000 for this coming year, but that, that goes away. Correct? The contract will remove that $10,000 expenditure.
If you're talking, if you're talking about the future of how those charging stations will, will the citizens or whatever have to absorb the costs of those? Probably they, they will not in the future, but, but you know, we're already talking to a contractor who, you know, that won't always be, that won't always be a free item to the citizens because the taxpayers are paying for that.
But the R and R will go away. Right.
Yeah.
That was my point because we did initiate the replacement of the electric vehicle charging stations with a vendor.
Yes, yes. The R and R goes away.
Yeah, okay. All right. The, the things that concern me are the potential of issues such as the clarifiers. And that cost, which is an unknown. I mean, we have, we have no idea what's coming our way or how long this could last as it is. Until we do get a solution ready to go in place. So that, that concerns me about expending some of those ARPA funds that we will probably need to keep everyone's toilets flushing and moving right along. So, um, but I think as Councilmember Raymond had mentioned, there, there are some things that we could. And I would be interested in knowing what bottom line you came up with, with all the ones you identified. But there's, there's several things that we could reduce. I mean, we could push things back a year. If we could delay purchasing a vehicle or delay the concession stand a year, things like that, not, that are not the ideals. But those are things we might have to consider if we're going to reduce the budget.
Thank you, Councilmember Willis. Councilmember Davis.
That water could be, it doesn't have to be done now. I mean, that water could be done at any time. So if we didn't use the expense, that's something that we could put off. Am I, am I correct that the water can be added anytime? It doesn't have to be added the time we're doing the streets?
Mayor, if I may address. Not all the council is aware of this. Just late this afternoon, we did find an unknown, previously unknown two-inch reclaim water line on the west side of North Atlantic Avenue. Potentially capable of servicing Oak Lane. So when we get to that item tonight on the agenda, I was going to break the news there that we want to ask, let city engineer go and see what can be done with that two-inch line to still serve the right of way that it serves, but also possibly what can be done for Oak Lane with that. In other words, that could bring that whole cost down a lot.
All right. Let me just finish. Again, I have the concerns about the water treatment plan where we don't know actually where we're going with that. There, a lot of it has already been said, so I will just, I'll wait and I'll probably have more questions after I hear everybody.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. Okay. Mayor Proton, did you want to say something or somebody down here?
No, go ahead. Oh, I just wanted to say about Oak Lane and the reclaimed water. Wouldn't it cost us more money to pave it and then put reclaimed water in if we had to wait?
It could be.
I mean, it has to be done before the paving.
It could theoretically, theoretically be done at any time. Typically, we would engineer it all for one time and one shot, put it all in while you're in there. But yeah, it could be added anytime also later. But this is encouraging news, what we found out today. Mayor, I know we're on limited time and you haven't spoken your mind yet either. But if there could be some consensus perhaps on council, what things we do want to pull out. So we're not setting a rate tonight. We're just having this discussion. If we could decide if there are certain things we, at least by consensus, want to pull out, we can have that ready for you next time.
Okay.
One more comment. Last, last week, last Monday, I went to Space Coast League of Cities and you never get to hear my reports because, because we never get that far. But I did have a discussion with one of our mayors from Brevard County. And he said to me, I'm very sad tonight, Angela. And I said, what, what's going on? And he said, my council voted to go way low, way low on this millage rollback, actually. And the problem with that is we can't go up. So he said, I don't know what we're going to do. And I don't know what we can do with the money we have because it doesn't look like we're going to be able to do much of anything. So I caution our council that when we do set this, we don't set it too low. It's good that right now we have the 3.5596 because we can always go lower. But when we set things too low, we can't go up. So I just want to say that. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we're, um, we voted the last meeting to set that and I think it'll come before us at a, at another meeting. Yeah, my comments are, I do want to touch on Oak Lane, popular one, just first and say that whatever we need to do, in my opinion, to get the reclaimed water done while we're doing the construction below grade utilities, whatever roadwork needs to be done, tying up that street, that, that we do it. There's never, not going to be a time better than, than at that time. So that to me would be the lowest cost. And then the sidewalks, just want to echo what we're hearing. Yeah, there's, I think, 100% strong opposition to sidewalks on that street. And so that number that was provided, understanding that it says in the stormwater fund, or it's five, on page 77 of the general fund summary, it shows $551,500 for Oak Lane improvements. This is the general fund. 77, page 77 of the capital improvement plan. And that project's actually broken down on page number.
Page 98 here.
98. And that, that was the section, for the sake of clarity, where we were talking about sidewalks. But that cost, how did we come up with the $550,000? Is that quotes and estimates or? Like, is there a contingency in that number? How, how solid are we on that?
Jeff, would you be willing to address that too?
That was based on the engineer's estimate. But, you know, it's changing every week. And there'll be a new engineer's estimate before we go out the bid for that project.
And so that includes paving the roadway. Stormwater system.
Yep.
Installation of new lighting.
Yep.
And then it says et cetera. Is there anything else in there? Major that we're talking about? That's pretty much it.
Are there maybe driveway apron extensions or things like that that might have to be addressed?
New curbing, you know, things like that to direct the stormwater. But that's, those are the major items.
You know roughly how long ago that estimate was provided by the engineer?
Yeah, the last one was March, I believe.
Okay.
So there will be another one coming up shortly.
And I agree, it'll probably change in that timeframe. So getting, getting a new one and seeing if an estimate, I think I saw 70,000 or something for reclaimed water, but with this new discovery, if we can do, get an estimate with doing everything. And I hope you're wrong in the sidewalk floor included. Like, oh, there it was. And we could pull it out and replace those funds with that, but it sounds like it wasn't. So.
Yeah, we can cut those reclaimed costs probably in half. Since we don't have to drill underneath the road.
That's great. And then the timing on when this project will be done, assuming it starts on time?
We're still waiting on a permit from St. John's.
Okay.
And we also have to utility pole move. It's getting very difficult to get FPO to move things in a timely manner.
I understand. Okay. The fund, the 300, where did I see it? On the stormwater fund, Oak Lane is mentioned again. That, what page is that on?
157.
Thank you very much. So 100, so page 157. Wow. That was impressive. Inside there, this is an additional 300, 1,500. It's a separate stormwater project. And the cash forward, where did I see that, Jen? It was on another page. 66. Thank you, Mark. I've got so many sticky notes. They all blend together. I'm over sticky. Here we go. So Oak Lane improvements. The 300, $1,500. Reenter with that. So, so that's represented on page 157. That's projected to be done this year. That's construction, right? That's not engineering. And yeah, the other one is, is projected to be done. The Oak Lane Improvements Infrastructure Maintenance 12, projected to be done this year too. All dependent on utility poles moving and permits. And we can now knowing, hopefully get reclaimed water. Awesome. Thank you very much. Did I see a hand raise out there or something? If you did, I'm going to try to wrap it up here and give you a chance to speak. Thank you again, Jeff. So, yeah, that was one. I agree that if we are going to make some, some, some cuts. I know that the citizens don't want their taxes to be raised. I think that that's very clear. And so my approach and hope is that this council can work together and do, I'm very encouraged by some of the things I've heard tonight. And delay, we're not saying no, saying not now on the things that are not going to cause too much of a negative impact. Patriots Park is, is one for $100,000. We had to do this last year. These vehicles slated for $40,000 for code enforcement, some of these are bigger trucks and things. If there's a way that we can get those down and maybe we buy secondary use or new ones. But taking line items and not necessarily taking it to zero, but figuring out, can we get a truck for 30,000 instead of 40? And, and start to work down on it as much as we can. But the, the 5 million of ARPA funds, I mean, when we're getting that slug of revenue, cash, and that this is the opportunity for us to use those funds that we normally would have spent out of our budget or had to pull or take a loan or debt and actually use the grant funds, which would give us an opportunity to relieve the taxes. And so my statement is, I understand we have inflation. I understand we've got raises. I am all for making sure that our employees are well compensated, that we can improve retention and the things that we need and structure program to make this place a productive place where people want to commit and become better at their jobs. Police, fire, 100% support those projects. Stormwater, wastewater, 100% support those projects. But when we get into the other projects, I think the opportunity is to try and get at or below the rollback rate. And so that would, what that means is we have a 30, roughly 36 million total. Some of that's cash forward and different funds, but cutting out 500, maybe a little bit more, $550,000 roughly gets us. five hundred fifty thousand dollars roughly gets us, um, to support, support the, the rollback rate. Uh, I think we can do that. Like I said, twenty percent with Patriots Park coming off and then figuring out how to whittle down. Um, we heard some, some ideas tonight and I think if we can do that, we're gonna be in a good position to not go forward with the tax increase. The city of Melbourne was able to give a tax decrease this year and one of the lowest in ten years. Every city's situation's different. Who knows, they might have a bunch of impact fees or something, you never know. But I, I really think that that's where, where we can go. So clarifying the areas, I think what we can do is circle back to the council and maybe just recap for our city manager, some of the things that are on your mind and we can maybe spend about a minute on each of us if we need it. But, um, if that sounds okay, we can go down the line and then try to wrap this meeting up.
Mr. Mayor, just twenty seconds, please. Just one thing, the, the mayor brought up a number of things to, that, there'll be a number of things in here that you could look at if you want to reduce or whatever. The Patriots Park thing, and I, maybe I think I told you last thing, we did get the seventy-five thousand dollar grant. So we just got that on July thirteenth before Gustavo left. So if the park's gonna cost a hundred thousand and they're gonna give us seventy-five thousand, probably a good idea that we use that grant money. That's all I have.
Thank you. And I do remember.
And that'll be added into revenue like you had mentioned last time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Kellum?
Yes, I, I just want to go through a couple of things. I think, um, city park redevelopment or the playground, that playground there is not in that bad of a shape, two hundred and fifty thousand. I think we could maybe push that out a year and it's.
Which page number is that?
One seventeen.
Okay, so number one, Todd, is page one seventeen.
Finish the splash pad, get the grand opening of the, uh, Multi-Gener Center. Take that two hundred and fifty thousand. Finance the concession stand because we have a baseball field that, that, and the, and the concession stand is used to raise money to let kids that don't have money play baseball. So that's something we need in our city. Um, I think the Civic Hub, it's very important. Um, it, there's a hundred and fifty, uh, thousand for design and community input. And if we take the a hundred thousand out of redevelopment because we need three workshops, we need community input. So that would, could we push that to the following year with, to start the construction? That would save us a hundred thousand there. Um, the sidewalk construction, we definitely need, uh, we've been trying to get sidewalks forever. Um, the only other thing I was thinking of, um, I think we definitely need the concession stand. Uh, I think we need to, if we had need to push Oak Lane out a little bit, but these people have been waiting forever. Um, but I'm happy about the reclaimed water or being there. Um, but Jeff and, uh, Jim had asked me to give them a little more time to figure out how they can get the reclaimed water there. So if we have to push that out a little bit, um, other than that, um, that's all I have for right now.
Awesome, thank you. And just to be sure, um, you know, this isn't necessarily consensus. I think we might all agree with everything, but perhaps, um, you can email him kind of a list if he needs it, if you didn't capture it all. And then when we get into the next one, maybe we can kind of summarize each of our points, these are the three things from Kellum, Morris and Raymond. And then we can all find out where we have common ground. Just an idea, that's obviously up to you, but, uh, Councilmember Raymond?
I, I agree with, um, Mayor Protem Kellum. Definitely we could push that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the playground equipment. It seems like the playground equipment that's there is fine and people use it constantly. They do love it. And if we can transfer that two hundred and fifty for the concession stand, I'm for that. I think that that would be a good use. And as far as Patriots Park, yes, we need to continue doing Patriots Park if we have grant money, obviously. And I mean, we, the staff, I have to say and tell the public that the staff does a great job of applying for grant money. And yes, there are a lot of grants available and yes, our staff is on it. They have done the research and they apply constantly for grants. So I just have to say congratulations to them about that. But I do think that, um, we could start the high point and then next month we'll discuss an exact millage rate. And as far as Melbourne goes, I do have to say, Mayor, um, that Melbourne definitely has a higher population and they did get a lot of ARPA money. I'm not sure of the exact figure, but it goes on population. So I do know for a fact that they were kind of hot. They were, um, their millage had been last year, well, seven point zero five one nine. I'm not sure, maybe that was their proposed, but that was, yeah. So I'm just saying that, you know, you have to look at the whole picture on that. But they did get a lot of ARPA money, so, and they are using that. So, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Councilmember Willis?
Uh, I don't think I need to belabor. We're pretty much in agreement on a lot of things.
If anything comes, just send it to Todd and maybe we can, on our one-on-ones, make sure we got it. Councilmember Davis?
Um, yeah, there's things to think about. I had not thought about the park that Mayor Protem had said, so I think that is a good idea to look at. And originally I was for removing the concession stand, but if there's places that we can save, I think that would be a good idea to get that concession stand. So I, I, I think that's a great idea. Um, nice to know that we, there is a possibility of lowering the cost for the reclaimed water, so that, that's something as well. So just different things that I've heard, different things I've taken in and to, and considered.
Okay, great. And I think mine, we're, um, yeah, obviously trying to get everything on the Oak Lane done with an exception of sidewalks. Um, and I, and I agree with, with all of these, these areas. Um, last question was economic development director, did that go any, refresh my memory?
It's not a funded position in this budget.
Okay. All right, well, with that, Todd?
Clarification, um, Mayor Protem, you spoke about the Civic Hub project. I just want to clarify, what you're saying is we want to push off any construction work to a future year. Don't include construction in this current year.
Right, you know, we have to do the workshops.
The master planning, limit it to master planning. Got it, thank you.
May I make a comment on that?
Please.
One thing I can understand where you're coming from, but we were also looking at, uh, certain ideas to help with flooding. So I would like to see maybe that pushed forward, even if we got some of the flooding, you know, that would.
But we still have to do the master planning first.
Okay, so, but to move forward with the master plan to, to look at the issues with flooding and how that area.
And that is, that is in this budget to do this, the master planning.
Okay.
Todd, i- if I may, real quick, this is very important for council.
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds. Remember, remember you're on a tight timeline now, September seventh is your first budget hearing. The, I'm sure the city manager will coordinate with the mayor and council members on how to meet and talk about the things, the cuts you may want to make. Um, keep that in mind because what's gonna happen on September seventh is, is when you come in here, you'll have to come to a consensus on that day on where you want to be, okay? And then we will get you, because right now nothing's been changed, so you will see a budget similar to the one we have in front of us. But when September seventh rolls around, you will, um, you will, uh, have to make a decision there because on September twenty-second, we will have to, uh, approve a final budget. So bringing those cuts that you, um, have to bring together will be very important for communication. However, the city manager and the mayor are going to want to, uh, do that. And remember that when you say you want to cut the CR, the CRA, the, the, the playground, two hundred and fifty K, great, you know, that could go, but remember you still, if you've got to bring it down, if you decided to bring it down to rollback, you still have to concentrate on general fund expenditures, not just CRA. That's all I got.
Thank you. Thank you all. If there's any final comments, I'd like to, um, say that we start at six eleven and take ten minutes to go. We got a twenty-three agenda item. I think so with that, meeting adjourned. We'll start here at.